Everything at all, Christina?
Yup, let me get the volume up here. It was just working over the... Speakers, now it's not.
It's not working over the speakers?
No.
Going to go the old-fashioned way?
Yup.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started before everything else breaks and, uh, don't worry here, let's go ahead and start the meeting call in the meeting order, we'll start with the pleasure agents. Thank you, everyone, I just, uh, know that we'll have to, uh, do everything by roll call with, uh, us on Zoom, so all the votes will be via roll call. With that, Christina, I'll ask that you call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parsons. Mayor Lambert.
Here. Thank you, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion of second to approve the agenda as, uh, as presented, Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Thank you, next we'll need a motion to approve the minutes of the April 6th, 2020 regular meeting.
Sound off.
Motion of second to approve the minutes as presented, roll call Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Thank you, the bills and claims were submitted in the agenda, there were 666,368 dollars of, uh, claims that were submitted, any questions from the council members? Comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, motion of second to approve, roll call Christina.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Thank you, we have one, uh, item on our consent calendar to approve the two remaining revolving loan fund applications, can I have a motion? Motion to a second to approve, uh, the revolving loan fund applications, that will expend our total allocation of 300,000 that we approved earlier. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, this is the part of our agenda, we've received public, uh, input, public comments. On my screen, I can't see anybody that's out there on Zoom that would, uh, be from the public, we have, uh...
It's just staff, mayor.
Pardon?
The only ones that are on there is staff.
That's what I thought, that's all I can see.
Yup.
Anybody, uh, present at the meeting?
Any, uh, public comment, this will be your time. There are some there.
Okay, go ahead.
Name and address.
Hi, my name is Joy Howe, I live at 1500 North Oak Ridge Place, Sioux Falls. And I was, um, just wondering what, what Brandon is being paid by Verizon to install a 5G network on our water tower, right by the high school?
We don't, it doesn't have 5G on it.
It will have, because I spoke to the installers.
He didn't know.
He did know. He told me, this will become 5G.
We don't have 5G, they have not applied for a permit for 5G.
Okay, um, well, what are you getting paid for the high level of 4G, which is how it's starting out as?
Uh, between, uh, Verizon and Sprint, I think we get about 13,000 dollars a year.
Okay, was there time for public input? I may have missed it. On that?
No, because all they were doing was just reinstalling or updating equipment on the water tower, that's been in place... Oh geez.
Long time.
Long time.
Okay, because I, I talked to the installers while they were there, and they said that they were there to increase bandwidth, which is what 5G does, and I said, "So how high are you going up?" And it was obvious, they were both very uncomfortable with the questions, and they said, "Well, upper limits of 4G." I said, "So very close to 5G," he says, "Yes, it will become 5G."
We have not received anything from Verizon or Sprint.
I'm probably not surprised. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, you can follow up with that with the contractors, I'm sure. Any others?
Any other public comment?
No. Okay, uh, as I said before, I don't know if you caught it, Brian, I'd ask that you follow up with the contractors.
We will.
Question for the public? We can answer that. For sure, thank you. Uh, item 7B is a report from MedStar, their quarterly report. So Mr. Reader is present, I saw him earlier on the video. Give a report.
Yep, he's coming up.
Very good.
It's still on. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Say, um, when Sioux Falls had their public hearing, I don't know if you guys all noticed, but the Hill Director was sitting over here, and people walked up to the microphone, and they're touching it, and they're touching this, and they're touching that, and then they leave, and the next guy does the same thing. So I'm, I'm happy to see that you have your clocks, wipes, and things here to protect from that, but, um, so I'll give you my quarterly report, the first thing I wanted to do is tell you that the Brandon Police Department, along with the sheriffs and everybody, did a fantastic job on the call yesterday, um, which is why I'm wearing what I'm wearing today, I wanted to show you what MedStar has done. When a call comes in and it's suspicious, uh, we're not quite sure what we're going on, uh, or we think it might be something that, uh, is something that we really don't want to attend, very bad. Um, as you can see, I've got this vest on, and in the vest, um, we've had four of these for our 2911 trucks, and then two more for our first response trucks. And in these pockets right here, is all the ALS gear that we need to take care of our officers, or whom not, that might get severely injured in a gun battle or a knife fight. And so, um, these little pockets here have everything from, uh, believe it or not, it's not very big, but it has a lot of stuff in there to, uh, stop bleeding, um, we even carry, uh, you know, the medication here to stop a drug overdose. So there's a whole lot of stuff in these vests, and the purpose of these are solely, uh, to go on the calls that we're not comfortable with, or the dispatch, dispatches a caller, so forth, so I just kind of wanted to show you guys what we did as a, as a company, in their kind of fashion too. But, um, anyway, again, these guys did a great job yesterday on, on their call, and we were happy to be a mile and a half back. So, um, anyway, just wanted to throw that out there. Um, number two, um, our quarterly report, I, I sent you guys, um, the calls that we had done, and, uh, every call that we ran was with at least one paramedic, and some of those with two. Uh, there was several calls that were one and two calls at the same time, uh, maybe not even so much both in Brandon, but in the county and in Brandon, and all the calls were covered. Um, our response times are between four and five minutes, and I think, uh, excuse me, I think the average for priority ones and priority twos was four minutes and 37 seconds on our response times for the city. Um, and that doesn't include priority threes. So, um, as you can see, I, I didn't bring it with me, because you all have it in front of you, it's very self-explanatory, it shows you the calls and the times, and even the, I think the employees are even on there, so if you had any questions, the employees are on there too. Um, so, um, our relationship with the Brandon Fire Department and the Brandon Police Department, I think it just really can't be much better than what it is. You know, we, um, we love working with these guys, the new chief is doing a fantastic job. He's good with public relations and making sure that everything is kind of cohesive and working well together. Your school resource officer, I don't know if he has much to do anymore, but, um, we... plenty busy, but he's aw, he's awesome too, I've, I've had to deal with him on, on a few things, with my own child in fact, and did an awesome job, so. Um, now with the coronavirus thing, what MedStar has done is we've, we've teamed up with the state, we have one ambulance, that is a Corona ambulance, we put one ambulance specifically to transport coronavirus patients, either from hospital to hospital, or if it comes in as a positive Corona in Brandon, this is the ambulance we're going to take. It's been 100% designed to handle the coronavirus patient, which means that we don't have anything extra in there, other than what we need to take care of these patients. Um, the front of the ambulances are completely sealed off to the back, so there's no air movement from the front to the back. Um, and we also have, uh, we have the state-of-the-art respirators and so forth for our paramedics to wear in the back, uh, full gla, uh, gowns and suits. So, um, and we're hoping that we don't run out of those if things do get a little hectic and hairy. But, uh, and we have, we have a second vehicle that we have set up and ready to go, if we need a second one for the Corona deal. We've been working well with Paramedics Plus out of Sioux Falls, and, uh, we've been keeping in contact with them on this, uh, on this virus thing that we're all not very happy about. And, um, so we've been sharing ideas and sharing the things that we need to do to be sure that both services have what we need, and, and we communicate well together. They need help, we're in Sioux Falls helping, we need help, they're going to come out here, so whatever it is. So the communication between the emergency services, especially with this virus, has been, um, awesome with everybody involved, and, um, that's about all I have, my, my employees, again, we've hired a few others, a, a few more in the paramedics, and they are critical care flight paramedics that are now working with us also. I think out of our whole staff, I think about 80% um, are of the flight status, the critical care status. And I believe that, um, we also have some critical care nurses working with us now. So our, the staff that we have for Brandon is absolutely awesome, and I'm proud of each and every one of them for what they do for this city, and, um, really, that's all I have, if they have any questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise I'll get out of your hair. I also do want to thank you very much, the, uh, the additional money that we're receiving every month is, is a help, and it does help us maintain, um, our status here in the city, and so, uh, for those of you who have supported that and helped us along with that, we really appreciate it, especially now the way things are, we've not let anybody go, our transit service is down about, uh, between 75 and 85%. That's where my money make is, my transfers for ambulance service is down about the same. So really, what we're looking at is 911s, and we all know about them. So, but we're still here, and we're going to serve this population, we're not going to give up, it's, it's what we do, and, uh, everything will pick up. MedStars are no different vote than anybody else in this room, and anybody else in this state or city, we're all in the same boat, we'll all get through it together. But again, that little additional money that we receive does help, and I thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, any questions from the council? As with everything, we, uh, sincerely appreciate all of our healthcare workers, and you're included in that category, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate all the efforts you've made and continue to make in these, uh, uncertain times of Grant. Thank you for your report, I'm very pleased to hear the, the ambulance report, and, uh, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, guys.
Moving on to item eight, uh, we have a second reading of ordinance number 605, the grease oil and sand trap ordinance. Brian, anything?
Nope, we haven't received any comments.
Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion to approve.
Assume there was a second there, I didn't catch it, but motion of second to approve the second reading of ordinance number 605, any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I would ask Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen. Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Item 8B is the second reading of ordinance number 607, which is the rejoin of the Rickwood addition. Any additional comments on that, Brian?
No, none.
No changes?
Nope.
With that, I would entertain a motion then to approve ordinance 607, second reading of ordinance 607. Motion of second, any questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, the roll call, Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Thank you, moving on to the golf course, we have two items of business relating to the golf course, the first one is a proposal from Nordby Golf Design for some flood repair consulting work, in the amount of 13,800 dollars.
Yes, we, uh, we contract, or contacted Landscapes Unlimited to see if they could recommend, or if they had the, the capabilities of, of doing consulting work to get the course back in shape. The biggest thing there is, uh, on the course itself is the, um, sand traps, the bunkers. So they've recommended Nordby Golf Course, Golf Course Design, uh, for 13,800. And Nordby has ex, has experience working with FEMA, getting through the FEMA funding process.
I will add that I've been working with FEMA, FEMA is, um, actually looking for these contracts and bids, um, they want these, because it helps them and their team, um, get some cost estimates and, and some costs in place, they'll certainly get some idea of those costs, but they, they really do want these contracts and, um, proposals.
Good. With that being said, is there a motion for the council to approve the consulting contract in the amount of 13,800? Motion of second to approve the contract, any further discussion? Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Very good, hopefully they're as excited to hear from us FEMA that is, as they're telling us they are. Uh, item B is a proposal from Clark Engineering, uh, for engineering of the bank's debt stabilization proposal. We've, I've heard about on the council for, ever since I've been on here, so, uh, it's not a new subject, it's in the amount of 36,102 dollars plus construction administration amounts of anywhere from 12 to 20,000, I think, in, in the contract.
Correct.
Comments from staff or Brian?
This, uh, if you remember last fall, we, we had some fairly serious erosion on Split Rock Creek along the golf course. Clark Engineering has, is fairly well-versed in that work, as well as dealing with FEMA and the Corps of Engineers, if you look on page, uh... I'm paging numbers on here, I do. 39, it shows the areas that Clark will be looking at and, and developing bid specs for, uh, repairs of those areas, so, this is outside of our normal scope of work. Fairly detailed with the Corps of Engineers, Clark does a, a fair amount of these projects throughout the state. And Lisa's got a couple of suggestions.
Well, just one comment, um, exhibit B refers to exhibit A, and we don't have an exhibit A marked, so, uh, we should have the motion, if it's going to go through, B, that the April 15th, 2020 proposed letter should be marked as exhibit A. So there's no confusion later what exhibit A was supposed to be in terms of what the scope of services is in exhibit B.
I entertain a motion?
Sound off. Second.
Motion of second to approve Clark Engineering, uh, engi, to perform engineering, uh, services on the bank's stabilization proposal on our golf course. Any further questions or comments? Now, Christina, call the roll.
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen. Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Very good. Parks and Recreation, we have a couple resolutions, uh, resolution 10-20, setting the tree pesticide application fee at 50 dollars per applicator.
Correct, um, just kind of going off of what our landscaping license is, just setting that, so we, once that ordinance goes into effect, I believe it's May 6th, then we can start licensing these tree pesticide applicators.
Very good, can I have a motion? Motion of second to approve the resolution 10-20, Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Good, next is resolution 11-20, which is, establishes a fee for a tree permit to, for a 10 dollars per tree planted in the boulevard. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion of the second, was there?
Yes.
Yes, Vicki.
Uh, any questions or concerns in the council? I would ask one question, Christina or Brian, is this something new, or is this something that we've done in the past?
We have done tree permits, they have not really been popular, um, they have been at no fee. Uh, we are going to start inspecting them however, and we would like to get the word out a lot more that you are supposed to get a tree permit when you plant it in the boulevard. Um, there's a lot of issues that arise when you plant them in the wrong spot, um, and we do have that ordinance in place, kind of telling you where you can plant them and what you need to stay away from, so we will be inspecting them a little more now.
Very good, I think, uh, I think it's appropriate, if nothing else, it establishes dialogue between the residents and City Hall on the proper placement of these trees, and, and there are a lot of issues that can be caused by them, so I think the dialogue will be very beneficial to everyone. With that, can you call the roll, Christina?
Yup.
Yes. So then the homeowner is responsible for like maintaining it too, right? What's on the boulevard, because I know some cities are different.
We trim them.
Oh, you guys do trim them? Okay.
Trim, but...
All this is saying, we have a list of approved trees that can be planted in the boulevard, so we need our permission to plant it on the city property, and there's certain regulations, it can only be so far apart, and so on and so forth, so we'll come out and check those, and then we do trim them, uh,
Okay.
if they encroach over the street or the sidewalk.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
I don't think so.
Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't have access, but...
Hey!
Hi!
What'd you guys poke?
Everyone back?
Yup. Last year. Did I do a call on that?
They're gonna unmute.
They gotta unmute their mic.
Yeah, Christina, you're muted on my, uh, spring.
Wow. Yes, I was.
There, you can move.
Looks like we're back on.
Yup.
We'll barrel through this, bear with us. Uh, I think we're at you calling the roll for resolution, uh, 11-20, Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Very good, we have a minimal list of, uh, summer employees for the Parks and Recs Department, looks like they're proposing to hire four seasonal employees, uh, listed in your agenda. Can I have a motion to approve those people?
Second.
Motion of second to approve the four hires for Parks and Recs, Misty Becker, Jake Paulson, Evan Brockmeyer, and Megan Jensen. Any questions for the council? If not, can you call the roll, Christina?
Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Item B5 is the pool and summer recreation program discussion, it's, Brian is informing that the Parks and Recs Committee has had, uh, discussions about the summer pool opening and/or possible non-opening of that, Brian, if you want to take off of that?
Correct, uh, actually, the next two items, the pool and summer rec program and COVID-19 discussions, all kind of roll into one. Uh, current projections from the state show that we should peak in infection rate here in Minnella County in mid-May, throughout the state in mid-June, with infections carrying on into, um, you know, at least mid-July. So, talking with Park and Rec, we mentioned it to them at the last, meeting last Wednesday, they've got a special meeting scheduled for the 29th, probably make a recommendation to the councils to whether or not we will open the pool. You know, looking at it, we would be looking at possibly opening the pool at the earliest, probably around the 4th of July. So we'd be looking at about a five-week season. At this point in time, we haven't hired any staff. You know, that's up in the air, this is a discussion that's going around all over the state with operations of pools. I think, uh, the vast majority of folks right at the moment are on hold to see where this, this virus goes. Um, I know there's three or four in the state that have already, four that have already canceled their pool for the season. So at this point in time, uh, we're waiting for two more weeks till the next council meeting to make that decision, at least at the council level. So what we would be looking at is if, if we would look at opening the week of July 4th. We'd need to start probably two weeks ahead of time, uh, get the staff trained. The problem with opening that late is, I think, first day of school is August 19th, if I remember right. Fall sports practices, assuming that they're, they're going to go forward, usually start about a week, week and a half ahead of the first day of school. We usually start losing kids, our lifeguard staff, probably a week to 10 days before school starts, so that's why we're looking at a very compressed season. The other thing that might come into play, if you remember, uh, of course, everybody remembers, we're looking at upgrades to the pool. Working with our consultants, we could bid that out, that project out sooner, if we didn't open the, the pool this summer. So, you know, any, any time that we can gain some time upfront, it certainly takes the pressure off opening next spring. And they, the consultants have been working on that, so we could bid it, I believe, about a month earlier than what we'd anticipated. So, Park Committee will make a recommendation at your next council meeting whether or not to move forward with that. Same thing holds true with summer rec. It's a little bit different, because they can get fired up a little easier, uh, much smaller staff than...
Sioux Falls has tabled their second reading of the ordinance, so it's kind of made it a little bit of a moot point for us, that whole situation. So with that said, I'll turn it back over to you, Brian, for review of Order 606.
Sure. Just an update on COVID, I gave you the timeline. You know, the state is still preparing for 5,000 infections, although their latest modeling shows that hopefully it will be about half of that if social distancing continues. They're looking at, one, two, three, four, five, six different models that they're consolidating to come up with their projections. The state, part of the mayor's meeting or conference call today with the governor, she explained they're adding some additional information for communities on the covid.sd.gov We've received a number of questions, and we've asked the state if we could get just a gross number, a total number of any infections in Brandon. They are unwilling to give us that information. They believe it's too much information to share with the public, so they will not give that to us. They are trying to, Governor Noem said that she'd been on Florida's website, and they do give that information, I believe, by zip code on Florida's website. Problem here in South Dakota is now that all counties are set up with a G.I.A. system, so they can't get that information that they need to distribute it. So we're still dealing with them. As far as the ordinances go, like the mayor said, Sioux Falls has tabled theirs for the time being. Brookings is having their first reading tonight. I think it's still on the agenda, haven't seen anything that it's not. There's a little bit of difference between the two. Not much of a difference between Sioux Falls' current ordinance, which we model our 606 on, versus what this is, other than quarantine, that you're required to quarantine. So the information we're getting from the state, or, I shouldn't say information, but the encouragement we're getting from the state is, this will last a while. So the governor would like us to encourage our residents to comply as much as they can. I don't anticipate a stay-at-home order from the governor. That could change tomorrow. But she is encouraging us to make sure that we communicate to our citizens that this is not going to be over with tomorrow. It's going to be a long-term issue that we'll be dealing with. So.
Key point there, if I can, I've been here, and I know those conference calls and whatnot with the mayor, the key point that she wants to drive out to the various cities in the state of South Dakota is, basically, we just need to keep our foot on the gas. We cannot let up on this. We're doing a great job of what we're doing. The city of Brandon is doing it very, very well under social distancing, washing their hands, wearing masks when you're out in public. It's all going well, and it's definitely helping, but we cannot let up. The next six weeks are just absolutely critical. And it's easy to let up because we're hearing a lot of reports nationally that we're on the backside of this. We are not on the backside. We are right smack dab in the middle of it right now, so it's so critical for our residents to keep their foot on the gas and keep doing what we are doing.
And the other morbid statistic that Governor Noem shared with us last week was, the death rate for COVID follows the infection rate by about two or three weeks. So once the infections start climbing, there's about a two-to-three week lag time before you start seeing fatalities. So I know there's a lot of talk in the community, well, there's only been eight deaths, there's 1,600 infections, but only eight deaths. But I would anticipate that that's going to start picking up. I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but that's what their modeling has indicated. So the folks in Brandon, I think, are doing an awesome job. The businesses that have changed their business practices, I think the residents are supporting them as best as they can. We did have a business reopen, but they're all in compliance with the no more than 10 patrons. The police department is doing a very good job of reviewing those businesses, making sure that they're in compliance. We were notified, and I think most everybody knows now, that we did have a local business that's going to close down this week due to infections, so they'll get their place cleaned up. And Anthony is, or Officer Lingan, as he's calling around for the next wave of discussions with businesses, I've asked him to ask the businesses to let us know if they are going to be closing, so that we get a heads up before we're hearing the artist. So, did I miss anything?
I think that's critical, that the ability of the city of Brandon to have Officer Lingan performing these duties has been very, very, very valuable to the city of Brandon, and continues to be. And I urge you, Officer Lingan, to keep doing what you're doing, keep out there in the public, keep out there in the businesses, assist in any way we can, and just, we as a council and a city need to continue to put the message out there to just keep our foot on the gas and just keep doing what we're doing, so we don't get, fall behind on this situation. We're doing great right now, but we've got a ways to go, and it's very, very difficult. We all know that.
So if I might, Mayor, the chamber has put together a program of gift cards, purchasing them from our local businesses to try to give them some cash flow. So if anybody can use those, you just contact the chamber, and they have a list of, I don't know, 30, 40 different businesses that we can buy gift cards to, just to try to keep them afloat during this time.
Are there comments from council members?
I would just echo the importance of getting that messaging out. I've had a lot of complaints, zero about businesses, but people are seeing the playdate still happening, and teenagers congregating, and heavy population in places when there's boredom, such as Menards or the grocery store. So I think so much of it does come back to that personal responsibility and making sure that we do keep the gas on, as was mentioned earlier. So I think anything that we can do, or the school can do, to just keep that message front and center would be super beneficial.
Very good. It gets a little muddled for me when council members are speaking, Brian.
Okay.
Is there anything more to add?
Nope, not at this time.
Thank you very much, everyone. Item D2, update from the Benefits Committee. Dana?
Yeah, so I just wanted to recap back in January, we had this as an agenda item, and we sought some direction from the council about what our goal was to have this committee get together and do, because there are a lot of different variables with insurance, from deductibles, networks, contributions, copays, et cetera. So the direction that we received back in January was for this committee to really get together and focus on what the priorities were, or are, of staff, so that we weren't just flying kind of blind with obtaining quotes. We were able to do a better job of matching our budget with priorities, and then look at kind of where we meet. So we have had a couple of meetings, and we've talked about a lot of things. We did compile a list of 10 prioritized items, and then asked all the staff to rank those items, and I think we had really good participation. Didn't we have a majority?
Yeah, I think everybody except for maybe one or two.
Okay. So just like super quick overview, the very top three on the list deal with cost sharing on premiums, open network and low deductible. The very bottom of the list is Vision Dental &amp; Life, and then in the middle are things that deal with copays, out-of-pocket maximums, prescription drugs, and disability coverage. So we obtained a lot of good feedback and information, I think, to work with, and as I understand it, the entire list was given to our agent to go forth and provide us with some quotes. And another positive that I foresee out of this is there's another carrier in South Dakota now, so in addition to Wellmark and United, there's Medica, and there's Stilvera in Sanford. So we've got five this year in the mix that he is working on quotes, and I believe he's already in that process now. So Vicki and I talked a little bit about this, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're really at the point where we feel we should have a council work session and see where we're landing on some of this, because as history has shown us in the past, we usually are going to have to go back and do some tweaks and send our agent kind of back to the drawing board, and it all takes time. And if other topics arise, if wages have to be looked at in conjunction with this, we just, we can't put it off. And the other side of that is, this would take effect July 1st, so we definitely are under the gun to make sure that we give employees ample time to understand any changes that may or may not happen.
So have the employees already put together, you know, completed the information for the bid process?
Oh, I have.
Okay. So we're in that, going down that road then?
He's getting all the paperwork done, preliminary paperwork. We haven't done any censuses yet.
I think doing the work session would be very helpful, so I would support that.
Any questions, comments from other councils, members?
I'm in favor of that.
Brian?
Yeah.
Any further?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one more, one more quick thing. I mean, I certainly would welcome the, what is it, six employees that were part of the Benefits Committee to join that work session. I think that would be certainly welcoming.
Brian, you need to repeat what's being said by council members. It's really, really muddled for me.
Yeah, Dana would like to have the employees come to the work session as well.
Please on the committee.
On the committee, so that's easy enough to arrange.
Okay. Very good. Any other comments, concerns?
We're just going to send this date or?
Yeah, I'll check calendars.
Mine's surprising like three times.
All right, pressing forward. Item D3, we have the core project, construction project financing, under 3A and B and C. The first item there is two proposals that the administration is showing you, a 15-year payback and a 20-year payback of the coronary refinancing. The administration is recommending a 20-year payback on those projects. Brian or Christina?
You know, I, we have talked about that, and you know, my opinion, I'd like to finance these as short as we can, but with cash flow being somewhat of a question mark for the next few years anyway, we're recommending a 20-year term on this. It frees up some cash flow short-term. The bonds would be callable after 10 years, so if things improve, which we all hope they will, we could certainly pay those bonds early after 10 years. So we're recommending a 20-year term right at the moment.
And I think that's a prudent recommendation. The difference in the two cash flow items would be about approximately $110,000 a year, which is going to be very critical for the city of Brandon, I think, going forward. These projects are not cheap. We're doing a lot of projects here. We've been backed up for quite a number of years, and so we're trying to get a lot of stuff done in a short amount of time, and they're not inexpensive. So we need to look at that and try to factor that into all of our decisions there, so I think a 20-year payback on a construction project such as this, that's a major demolition of roads, sewer, sanitary sewer, water, everything, is a very viable option. So I don't think I'm looking for a motion here, I just want consensus from the council that, to accept the recommendation to proceed with a 20-year payback on these loans. They'll go ahead and implement that into the financing of these when they issue the bonds. Is there any objection to that?
None.
And then we'll move forward. Then Item 3B is the engagement letter with the financing company of DA Davidson. We do need a motion to approve that engagement letter to proceed with the financing with DA Davidson.
Mayor, if I may add, paragraph 5, my recommendation of engagement letter, would be to change that paragraph 5. The way it's proposed is that Davidson and employees, officers, agents do not have any liability for the services they provide thereunder. That would cause them, if they were negligent or engaged in willful misconduct, to not have any liability towards the city. So my recommendation is an approval with the modification to paragraph 5, that the Davidson and his employees, officers, agents, and affiliates shall have liability to the extent of their negligence or willful misconduct.
Okay. Brian, can you quickly just summarize that for me? I don't know what the problem is.
Yeah.
You're coming in a little unclear, and everybody else gets really muddled.
Oh, good. It's not good to be you if you're only listening to me. Lisa would like to change the limitation of liability for DA Davidson right now in their engagement letter. They don't have any liability. She is recommending that we change that language, that their employees, officers, agents, affiliates would have liability due to their negligence.
Or willful misconduct.
Or willful misconduct. So nothing too strange.
Okay. I just had a new attorney motion with that change recommended by our senior attorney.
Motion to approve as amended.
Is there a second?
Yep, David.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Christina, call the rule.
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Okay, I have D3C, the Resolution 12-20 authorizing the sale of these tax revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million. Do you have a motion to approve that?
Sound move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments from the council? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have a payout number one for the coronary project in the amount of $86,501.60 to Sioux Co. Construction. Do you have a motion to approve that payout one?
Second.
Motion is second to approve payout number one in the amount of $86,501.60. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Thank you. We have payout number eight for the Holly Boulevard construction project to first grade excavate in the amount of $157,939.62. Do you have a motion?
Sound move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve payout number eight. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Okay, I have D3C, the Resolution 12-20 authorizing the sale of these tax revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $7 million. Do you have a motion to approve that?
Sound move.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions, comments from the council? Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Next, we have a payout number one for the coronary project in the amount of $86,501.60 to Sioux Co. Construction. Do you have a motion to approve that payout one?
Second.
Motion is second to approve payout number one in the amount of $86,501.60. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Thank you. We have payout number eight for the Holly Boulevard construction project to first grade excavate in the amount of $157,939.62. Do you have a motion?
Sound move.
Second.
Motion is second to approve payout number eight. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
the amount of adding $14,320 to, uh, pay for the two 12-inch valves of the additive project. I can have a motion to approve change order number one?
So moved.
Motion is second to approve change order number one in the well number eight project. Any question for the council? Here and now, Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye.
Item F2 is to approve agreement with AE2S to prepare a water treatment facility plan in an amount of $59,450. Can I have a motion to approve that plan? Motion is second to approve the water treatment facility plan with AE2S in the amount of $59,450. Christina?
Clark?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye. In these times of COVID-19, Brian, give us some good news on item F3.
Our, our drinking water report from the state came back. Uh, we're receiving the secretary's award again, so this is the 19th consecutive year that we've received the award. Uh, we will be getting notifications later and certifications for our certified operators, and this report will be going out in this month's utility bill to all of our customers.
What's the magic number in there?
No violations at all. We didn't exceed any of the, any of the, uh, limits. Uh, if you want to know the, the magic number that everybody's been talking about lately is the alpha emitters and the combined radium. Uh, alpha emitters, the highest detected level was 10, the the maximum allowed is 15. For the combined radium of 226 and 228, the maximum contaminant level is 5, and and our highest detected was a 2, and it's been lower since then.
So, where are the balloons dropping out of the ceiling and the champagne? I mean, really, we got to celebrate these things.
We're not drinking champagne, we're drinking water.
We have pens. Thank you, Dan. Well, I would, I would like to congratulate the staff on a job well done, and I I just think it goes to prove that, um, we were doing a good job all along, so I appreciate what they're doing.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. The good news report before getting that out in the public.
Yep, one other thing, uh, we are testing, um, in addition to what's required by the state, we are doing our own testing voluntarily for radium, and when we get those test results back, uh, we cert, we we post those. So, we're doing more testing than is required.
Very good. I think that's a prudent move. Item number 10 is, uh, new business, uh, looks like new business, we had a lot of financial reports in there. Christina, anything you'd like to point out on those?
Not, right now, Mayor, not, at this point, not seeing any downtick, because we haven't seen any March numbers, so...
Wait till second quarter, right?
Right.
Uh, thank you. Any other new business from council members? Here and now, entertain a motion to adjourn at, uh, 6:52. Did I get that? I got a motion is second to adjourn, Christina?
Yep. Clark?
Call the roll.
David?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Jorgensen?
Aye.
Cole?
Aye.
Parsons?
Aye. Thank you so much, everyone. We made it through.
Yeah.
I'm completely unscathed, but we made it through in fine colors. Thank you, everyone. Have a good week, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in case you're curious, Chris Gaylord, this court date is July 6.